And really want to welcome you in open arms. I can't wait to hear about your projects. And sorry, my welcoming and congratulations was hindered a little bit, but I look forward to hearing from you guys on one-on-one basis and being in communication. Thank you, President Baxter.
Trustee Kellod.
No, what I was asking trustee Baxter was about the task force, not about introductions. So, two things. One, when Adrian retired, he said he would have done the job for free all those years as a full-time faculty. So now you're coming back and you're doing something for free at the college. So you got your wish, I guess. But welcome back. And two, we have a LEAD Academy, we think, because it's here. Sometimes you have a tendency to think it's something that's very common throughout the community college system, but it's really not. And I know that we have with the statewide trustee organization, we're actually doing a presentation, well, we, colleges, Rose, you're leading it, for CCLC, for one of our breakout sessions on how Long Beach City College, how we work our communications, working in different college constituency groups. And LEAD Academy is actually the theme. So I know that's coming up here in the next couple.
November.
November, November at Riverside. So, and simply the interest of other colleges to see how we do this. And once again, you step back and realize we do a lot of things here that a lot of other colleges don't do, and you don't realize that sometimes. So it's going to be a great presentation because it's a great subject. So congratulations and thank you all.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Thank you, Rose.
Thank you.
All right. The next area is, oh, I'm lost my place here. Oh, Faculty and Staff Diversity Report, annual update.
Thank you, everyone. So let me introduce the presenters of our 2015-16 Faculty and Staff Diversity Report. This year, I'm delighted to introduce Jean Durand, who is our new Associate Vice President. We're delighted that he's on board after approximately, well, over a year of having a vacancy there. And then, of course, next to him, Mona has double duty tonight, is Mona Hassan, our Director of Classified Personnel. So Mona, thank you for being here tonight. And so I'm going to turn it over to you.
Well, thank you again for having us and community and audience. And so I wanted to start off by letting you know that this Faculty and Staff Diversity Report, the annual report, represents our diversity efforts in recruitment and hiring for the 2015-16 academic year, which is, well, actually, from July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2016. And I wanted to start off by acknowledging the committee, the Diversity and Staff Diversity Committee. It's, I co-chair the committee with Corinne Magdalena, who represents the classified group. And then Paula Fisher was here during this period. She has since retired, but she represented faculty as the co-chair. And then we have Jerry Florence, Janay Hund, Amy Fredericks, Ryan Schworfs, who I saw here earlier, he was in the LEAD Academy 2015, Diana Torres, Diane Banks, Jean Durand, Deana Humble, who is here, and Joshua Williams. And we have a few vacancies which we're filling this year. So the next slide will talk a little bit about what we're going to present, which is our student profile, hiring demographics, and the initiatives that we developed for this year for the 15-16 school year or fiscal year. We'll begin with the student profile. And the student profile is important because as we look at our demographics, we look at that as some kind of, a sort of benchmark for what we want to do as it relates to our diversity hiring. So if you look at this graphic here, it'll indicate that our largest group here is the Hispanic, students of Hispanic descent. And then it's followed by our white, non-Hispanic group, which is at 14%. So we have 58% Hispanic-Latino, and then we have white, non-Hispanic at almost 14%. And then our third-largest group is the Asian-Pacific Islander-Filipino group, followed by our African-American group, which is almost at 12%. And then we have less than 1% of Native American and others that did not declare their ethnicity on our demographics report. So we go right into our management recruitments. And this is the number of people in our applicant pools. It's a longitudinal series here, beginning with 2012, '13 through this year, ending June 30th, 2016. So if you could see for our management recruitments, our applicant pool went from 55% to 73% representing diversity. So that is moving in the right direction. And you'll see that we had a peak in our hiring because sometimes when our numbers are low and we had 10 hires that year, and depending on what's happening, it seems like that was an outlier there, that we had a 70% diversity rate in '12-'13. But then we go on, and it looks like it normalizes in the following year, which is the trend that we're seeing here in '13-'14. It went from 42%, then it took a little dip in '14-'15, and then now we're back up to 58%. So our hiring is going in the right direction. So that's good news. 58% represents our hiring and the percentage of diverse applicants that were hired there. Then we go into the longitudinal study for the classified recruitment. So if you'll see there, of course, we have many more applications because we have a larger market, more positions. So we start off with a 77% diversity representation in our pool, and we end up with the same percentage, which is 77%. The big difference on this chart is you'll see that the number of people that we're hiring that represent one of those ethnic groups, which is, it was 59% in '12-'13, and now we're at 69% for our classified recruitment. So from 32 hires to 68, so we're on the upturn on our hiring as well, and that is good news. So we're proud of those numbers. You'll look at our ethnic groups, and you'll see that there's a fair representation of those groups, similar in percentages to our student population in that order of at least the numbers there. So then I'm going to turn it over to Jean Durand, who's going to talk a little bit about the faculty recruitment.
Thank you. Hello, everybody. So the one thing I want to talk about is faculty recruitment is a very different animal than classified or management. It's very cyclical. It can be very competitive. And so the timeframe and the strategy around getting out is very important to success, I believe, in recruiting. And if you look at the numbers, you're going to see a little bit of a lift at around '13-'14. Because prior to that, at least this is my experience from where I came from and in talking to my peers, colleges were not hiring. People were coming out of the recession. It was really the year of '13-'14 that we saw an increase in faculty hiring. So my personal belief is that there was a bit of a pent-up demand, a bigger pool of candidates. And so I think this is reflected in the diversity, which is the highest there. In addition, it's a smaller cohort of hires. So the ability of one or two hires to change that percentage is greater than as we go down the row and we see that we're hiring more faculty. You look at '14-'15, again, 45% for the pool, 43% hired. And then it dropped a little bit in '15-'16, again, 42%. The one thing I want to talk about this, and we'll see it in the other, is the timing. One thing, I've been here for two months, in looking at these numbers and in talking to the people who are involved in hiring, I think some of the issues that we may have had and some of the opportunities that we do have going forward is to get out earlier. We're working with the lovely Ms. Kane and Academic Senate, as well as the rest of the faculty, the deans and the VPs, to make sure that we are first out in the market, to make sure our hiring is accelerated, and to make sure we, especially in this very concentrated Southern California area, where we have a lot of colleges that are competing for the same talent, especially the same diverse talent, that we're the school that goes out and gives the offers first. So that's what we're promising to do. It's going to take a lot of work. It's moving a lot of people. It's coordinating a lot of schedules. But that's our commitment. That's our commitment to the college. And more importantly, that's our commitment to the students, to make sure that we work harder so that the face of the faculty matches the face of our student and that our inclusion is higher. Let's go to the next. Part-time, similarly, you see, although a little more drop this last time. The one thing, which I'll give you a little heads up, but we'll talk about at the end, is we have an intern program, which this is, I think, the, well, fifth or sixth year, I forget how many years it's been, I think since 2010 to 2015, last year. So anyway, what we're doing with that is we're working to make sure that we have a more diverse adjunct pool, because we know if we do that, we're going to have a more diverse full-time faculty pool to hire from. Because clearly, adjuncts who are here make some of the best candidates. They already know the students, know the culture. And Mona.
So now we go into our actual workforce and the number of people that were hired. So if you'll look at the numbers there, our diversity went from in '11-'12, which is a slightly different time period than our recruitment statistics, at almost 49% diversity rate to 51%. And so when we look at those numbers, you can see that, you know, that's improvement. We have work to do in that area still, I believe, but it is moving in the right direction. We are hiring at a rate of, well, this year was 106, number of management. We started off this period with 103, took a dip when we had the reductions, and then now we're back up to those numbers. So going in the right direction, 51% diversity rate. And we'll go to the next slide, which will represent our classified staff diversity. So you'll see there, we had in '11-'12 hired 31. We went to 68 in '15-'16, and that represents a 60% diversity rate overall there. So moving in the right direction again at 60%.
And then a full-time faculty, you know, what's interesting is actually the diversity percentages are increasing. Some of this, of course, is the retirement and as it changes. But it is going in the right direction. We're working to get it higher. And then we can just talk about all groups if you want. As you can see, classified staff with the highest level of diversity. Faculty, be it part-time or full-time, similar percentage, and management over 50% diverse. So this is one thing I want to talk about, and in particular, it's our faculty internship program. And this is where we pair an intern, a recent grad, with a full-time faculty mentor. It's been very successful. So just in last year, we had six interns go through, seven, sorry, interns go through. Six of those were hired as adjuncts, and of those six, 50% was diverse. So we're feeding the pool of full-time faculty applicants. This is something we believe we're going to see some results for in the long term, but we're excited about it. And we're so excited to the point that we actually increased it from six, seven last year to 23 this year, which is a big deal. And it's a big commitment by the faculty. But we think we're going to get payoff down the road. So let's look at our interns. I want to thank Diane Banks, because she works really hard to coordinate this. So if you can imagine coordinating 23 interns, the faculty mentees, getting everyone together, and doing it with a high level of gracious service, she really does an excellent job. So I want to recognize her on this. The other thank you I really want to give to is to the full-time faculty. It is a commitment of their time. But we have had such an outpouring, especially this semester, of cooperation, of enthusiasm, of real passion for this program. So in administration of justice, a thank you to Michael Biggs. In art, thank you to Christopher Chin. These are the mentees below. Child development, Debbie Buens. And Kathleen Vokun. In counseling, the mentors, Sarell Blesetti. And I apologize if I mispronounce anyone's name. I'm new here. I get to use that for a little while. And Elijah Sims. In English, a thank you to our mentors, Natalie Burgess, Allison Murray, Velvet Pearson, Laura Wheeler. And in health, a thank you to Grace Pocorni. In history, thank you to our mentors, Gilbert Estrada, who I believe himself was in the program and was mentored and then came back to us as a full-time faculty. It's a great success story. Mark Markey and Lisa Orr. In mathematics, to Bhagy Anand. Matthew Lawrence in philosophy. Paul Savoy, political science. Sherry Zampelli. And Janay Hund, thank you.
As you know, because you approved it, May 24th, we adopted our new Equal Employment Opportunity Plan that is aligned with the Title V regulations and the nine multiple measures or methods of successful best practices in recruitment and retention of a diverse workforce. And the district's Faculty and Staff Diversity Committee sort of shifted their focus from not only providing training for hiring committees and such, but also being the advisory committee for the district's EEO plan. It's a living document. We review it. We're about to make a couple of changes on it that were recommended by our peer review, and we will be bringing those forward to the Board of Trustees. We also now have a monthly new classified staff orientation. And in that orientation, we include some training on diversity, including unconscious biases, training, campus tours. So not only can people hear about what the college is about, but see our students in action and get to also know the campuses as well. And then we also provide, of course, the objectives and purpose of the district's EEO plan. We also have implemented a classified professional development program. It's structured. It's been in force since March of 2015. And this last workshop or conference that we had was just last Tuesday, on September 20th. And our focus was on diversity, equity, and inclusion. We had the Director of Race, Ethnicity, and Culture from UCLA, Dr. Tyrone Howard, present. And we also had some folks come over and do some workshops on emotional intelligence and diversity. So we had quite a number of our classified employees that participated, as they always do, and very good feedback from them on that. So those are some of the initiatives that we have on board. And so that's our presentation. We thank you for having us tonight.
Trustee Malauulu, you had a question?
Yes, thank you. Thank you both for the very thorough report. I have two questions for you. In looking at some of your graphics here, we can, you know, anyone, page 11, all of them, I see that you've got very specific ethnic groups identified, but I don't see a space for other. Do we not have any applicants or any staff members who are biracial or bicultural or applicants? And the only reason I'm asking is, you know, personally, I would need to hit other, or my children would need to hit other. So it would be very difficult to just choose one. Is, was that a conscious decision that you guys made?
I think, if I can answer that, I think part of that is because there are only certain categories of ethnicities that we actually report. Part of it is federal, part of it is state. So there really is not an opportunity for someone just to sort of self-select or identify in a unique way, other than a pull-down menu that comes from our application system. And that's really the reason, which is a little bit different than if how we identify students or if people self-identify, or they may have a unique identifier which might be out of our normal category.
Right, right. I do understand that, and I know that that was a big issue. I sat in on a couple of census meetings in 2010, and that was a big issue because now, you know, especially now with our population growth, you know, it is very difficult. And I know a lot of students who have sat in my classroom who found it very difficult to identify with one or another, especially if, you know, their mother is very specifically one ethnic group and their father is very specifically another. It just makes it very difficult. So, you know, moving forward, it would be nice if you could consider in future reports or analyzing data to include people who do have mixed backgrounds.
It's certainly something we can look into, is the functionality of our applicant tracking system or finding another way. It's a good point. Thank you.
Thank you. And then the other question that I have, I'm not sure can be done as easily. Of course, I think, you know, what I just asked you was easy. It's probably a ton of work for you, but.
But we get paid to do.
When I saw your analysis here with the job classifications, management, classified, full-time, part-time, one question that came to mind is what type of roles or what positions specifically did the management or classified have with each ethnic group? And maybe it's a little bit of a stretch for me to ask that, but I was just really curious if there's a way to further break down data by job category. I'd be very interested to take some of this information back, especially because, you know, we're in the business of education, and I think education really does make a difference. And if we can push more education in certain ethnic groups to show the difference in their, maybe perhaps going into management, or what a difference that would make, it might allow students an opportunity to see, you know, and then if we can attach their pay to that, it might be even more incentive. That might be a very difficult ask, but.
We can, we can look.
I don't even know if I even made sense. Did I articulate that well?
One of the changes, actually, and we are going to be tracking that information, is especially for the classified job families, is to identify the various categories that are delineated through the nine multiple methods, to be more specific about this. So we are beginning that process of identifying in more specific categories.
Okay. And the last question I have is, when an applicant completes the process, I don't know if it's all done online now. I know when I first applied many years ago, it was paper, and then I was told I had to resubmit online. Is, you know, going back to the question of, you know, choosing your ethnicity, is there a place in that application where we can self-identify? Or, because I've actually seen that, and I can't remember where I saw it recently, but there was, I think it was a scholarship. I think it was, one of my daughters was applying for a scholarship, and I think they actually, because what happened is she became eligible for more scholarships if she had more ethnic background. So I'm wondering if for us, as an employer, if there's a way that we can identify, you know, in our application process.
It's something I was thinking about when you made your first point about being able to report more. And it's certainly something we'll look into and get back to everyone if we can do it. It has to do with our vendor, because we do use, everything is online. So if there's an opportunity.
Great.
We'll grasp it.
Cool. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Zia.
Yes, thank you so much for a great presentation. I'm looking at the numbers, and, you know, I understand, we recognize that we have room for improvement. I'm looking at the classified numbers, just between blacks and Hispanic groups, which really represent the majority of our demographics of students. I mean, from the people who applied to how many people were hired, that's the percentage I'm looking at. For classifieds, for blacks, it's been 0.9%. Hispanics, it's 1.6%. Faculty, the black hires that we've had is 0.4%. Hispanics, 2.3%. And management is even worse numbers. It's for our black population, it's 1% from the number of applicants to those who've been hired. And then Hispanics, 0.2%. I mean, that's pretty bad. And what are we doing to change those numbers? What are some of the things that were, some of the steps? I've followed this for years. I know this has been a trying area for us. Why is that? Why is it that we have these people apply? I have constituents who approach me all the time, who say, look, I keep applying. And, you know, they're within those two demographics. And they don't, for some reason, they don't even get, are given an opportunity to be interviewed. But it's just a question for me that these percentages are staggering. It's, I'm personally very disappointed and unhappy about them. And so I'd like to see, and I'm sure that sentiment is shared, but I'd like to see what kind of steps we're putting in place to remedy that.
And we do have outreach through our advertisement to specific areas. But one thing that will happen here with the statistics is that, for example, out of the 882 African-American applicant pool on that slide, I think that you're referring to, for the classified recruitment at least, some of them are, the applicants apply for various positions. And, you know, in this case, we're limited to the number of positions that we actually have available. So of course, we're going to have maybe 100 applicants for one vacant position. And so when we look at the numbers, yes, eight represents a small percentage of the 882. The 21 white, non-minority applicants represent a very small percentage of the 933. But it's based on our labor availability as it pertains to the jobs that are available. But we certainly realize that we need to continue our outreach efforts and support increasing our diversity in the workplace, but.
Well, it seems that we don't have a problem in the outreach, because it seems that there is quite a number of applicants that do get outreach to, and they, we get bites and they apply. It's just the selection process. I mean, eight out of 882, 23 out of 1,373 people, that's not good. It's bad.
Trustee Zia, yes, I agree with you. In fact, we were looking at those numbers. It's going to require a deeper dive into the data to try and find out what is actually going on there. It's actually going to require looking at all the applications and trying to find out why. Why has this happened? So it is obviously work that needs to be done, analysis that needs to be done, so we can have a better picture of what's going on there.
Are the selection committee members all white?
No, no.
Predominantly white?
We'd have to.
It sounds like, because it doesn't sound like we have much folks, people with that background.
Yeah. I think that's one thing we would obviously want to analyze, but I would say that that's not necessarily the case, that they're predominantly white. We have a very diverse campus, and I, just looking at the selection committees, typically they're diverse. So I can't say that that's the issue. But at this moment, I couldn't tell you exactly what it is until we get into the data and look at it.
But some things that we do do is if we see, it's called a line-item analysis on our exams, at least on the classified side. If we see that a question's being, people are failing the same question, and it may be a bias against any gender or ethnicity, we do a line-item analysis to look at that a little bit more deeply, to see if we need to remove that question. I know when I was growing up, and actually, I was already unemployed at a school district, somebody asked me if I had a credenza. And I said, no, I don't. I have a two-drawer file cabinet. And she laughed. And I, credenza was not a part of my vocabulary growing up. I knew about a two-drawer lateral filing cabinet. So we have some language barriers or just some background. What is our background and what words are we exposed to? So we look at that. The other question I could ask or answer is, our panel members are diverse, and at least on the classified recruitment, we don't have any identifiers like names. A lot of, it's all based on the ID number or the application number, not based on the names. So we try to not disclose anything that may identify someone. Now, towards the end, when you go to the final stage of that selection process, you have to come in for the oral interview. At that point, then, you may assess somebody's ethnicity at that point. But our panel members, we've made it a point, at least for the last year and a half, to have representation of gender and ethnicity on our selection committees. We do need to have professional development, which includes training, ongoing of our panel members, and that's a priority for us this year as well.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, now we have the communications plan update.
And for that, we will turn it over to our director, John Pope.
Well, good evening again, Board President Baxter, trustees, and President Oakley. So thank you so much for this opportunity. So thank you so much for this opportunity to update you on where we are with the Strategic Communications Plan since my last presentation in May of 2015.